Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. I call to order the public work session of the Portsmouth City Council. I want to thank all of you for attending, and I want to thank my colleagues on council. And Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle. Mr. Barnes.
Present.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker. Mr. Woodard. Mayor Glover.
Here. Madam City Manager? You have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening. The first presenters this evening will be our Community Development Manager, Mr. Jeffrey Kramer, and he will be assisted by Deputy City Manager Bob Baldwin as necessary. Jeff oversees the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, and the presentation will provide an overview of how the funds are allocated, managed, and dispersed.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, city council members. I'm going to, as the city manager said, I'll present to you the CPD program, which consists of the Community Development Block Grant Funds and the Home Investment Partnership Program Funds. And this is the, an overview of the fiscal 2223 budget. So this is the fiscal year 23, Community Development Block Grant and Home Program budgets. This is the money we get annually through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city prepares an annual action plan detailing how the resources will be used to implement the goals outlined in the five-year consolidated plan, and this fiscal 2223 is the fourth year of the five-year cycle. So HUD hasn't given us an allocation yet for this year. That should be coming in the next 30 days or so, probably a little less. So we based our budget for '23 off of the current year budget of 1.63 for the CDBG. We project program income of $155,000, and then there's $900,000 of prior year's uncommitted funds that's available, which gives us a budget of 2.6, close to 2.7 million. And we had 2.9 of requests for CDBG. Before we get into the activities, we're just going to give you a quick rundown of sort of the broad categories of how the funds are used. There's three categories of eligible activities, including the Public Services, which are the activities related to childcare, healthcare, job training, recreation programs, education programs, public safety services, fair housing activities, seniors for services, homeless, drug abuse counseling, energy conservation. And this is limited to 15% of the annual allocation, plus 15% of the program income that was receded in the prior year, or actually this year. Then we can use up to 20% of the money for admin and planning, and these are activities related to carrying out the CDBG program and doing studies and analysis, data gathering, preparation of plans. And then the final is what is essentially called project use, and it lumps together everything else. I typically refer to it as bricks and mortar and includes acquisition of property, clearance, disposition, public facility and infrastructure improvements, rehabilitation and preservation, economic development activities, micro enterprise assistance, and construction of housing in very limited circumstances by CBDOs, which are community-based development organizations. And then any eligible activity funded with CDBG also needs to meet one of the three national objectives. The national objectives are benefiting low and moderate income persons, preventing or eliminating slums or blight and urgent needs. So we've broken out the various activities by the eligible categories, and these show the Public Services by their current year funding, their requested funding, and their proposed funding. And we can just look at the proposed funding. These activities up at the top are the Parks and Recreation activities. So we're funding the kids' meals, the mobile kids' meals for about 60,000. The youth leadership at 17, and the summer camp enrollment fee for the 17. The senior transportation, I believe, from what I understand, will be funded through the city this year. And then other activities we're funding by local nonprofit subrecipients will be the Independence Center, which will, for 44.5, and they do housing and various counseling services for disabled persons. Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless for 27,000 to do a central intake for the homeless. For Kids, their homeless hotline at 54,000. The Aggleston Homeless Employment Services for 40,000. The Department of Public Economic Development, their workforce development program for 90,000. And that gives us about $350,000 of public service activities. These are the admin and planning activities that we're proposing for funding. There's 175,000 for the overall management of the CDBG program, and then $100,000 that we provide for DSS, who asks, who acts as the fiscal agent for the Portsmouth Housing, Portsmouth Homeless Action Consortium, which is the continuum of care, and they use that money for their ongoing planning and admin services. And that gives us a budget of 275 for the admin and planning. And then the other, the final category of CDBG-funded activities include these bricks and mortars, and we've funded a little over 2 million of those activities, including redevelopment of the neighborhood park at Highland and Lansing, the railing along the river at City Park, rehab of the building, the neighborhood facility building, the redevelopment of the concession stand at J. E. Parker, Wesley Community Service Center. They have an education building that's there, and they, the Hampton Roads Action, Hampton Roads Community Action Agency is going to do a head start program there. And they've gotten money through one of the local foundations, too, so they're, we're going to support that. The Aggleston, they run the laundry, the commercial laundry service where they employ the disabled persons, and so we're going to fund them for another piece of equipment for 75,000. And then Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority is doing a housing rehab program for elderly owner households, 62 and older, and that's at $160,000. And that gives us this $2 million of CDBG program. This is just a review for you all of the recreation improvements that we funded with CDBG over the last seven years, and it's broken them out by those are underway and those are completed. So we've done some things at the Sportsplex. We did the redevelopment of the Griffin Park. We're right now in the process of doing a roof and HVAC at the neighborhood facility, and we're underway with redevelopment of Jefferson and Maplewood Park. And then what's been completed is we did the sports field at Brighton Elementary, the football field at Cavalier Manor, the gym at the Sportsplex, security and systems at J. E. Parker Neighborhood Facility, play equipment at Dale Homes and Swanson Homes, variety of things at City Park, and then play equipment at a couple of the elementary schools. And that was about $9.5 million of activities, of spending out there on those activities. This is the home entitlement. Again, we're projecting what we have this year, which is the 425,000, and we have no other money for that. We had 438,700 of requests. And our home projects include, these are all things that we're currently funding, rent assistance with for kids for 161,000, down and closing assistance with Hampton Roads Planning District Commission for 200,000, and then we have to do 15% set aside, which is the 63,800, for a community-based development organization, and that gets us to the 425. And then that's the schedule for the program. You're doing your public hearings tonight, and then on the 26th, you'll adopt on May 10th, and we'll submit to HUD on May 15 with the program, you're starting on July 1. And I will take any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. And Dr. Whitaker, so you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kramer. I have quite a few questions because the information here is pretty broad and not very specific. The, starting with your first page, where you talk about, you mentioned a five-year cycle, and you said that we are now in our fourth year. So that five-year cycle, how much, what years are you speaking of in that cycle specifically? And how much was allocated for that cycle?
So we've been getting in the range of 1.5, 1.6 every year, and so it goes, so this is '22, so it would have been, I'm trying to do the math on this, 18, the, I guess, thinking the budget for 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, okay. Probably would have started with 19, 20, 21, 22, and '23, we'll go out to '24.
Okay, so...
No, 20, yeah, 20. I get confused because our HUD budget is a different, called a different year than our city budget. So the '24 budget next year will be the last year covered by the current five-year plan. So we cover '24, '23, '22, '21, and '20.
Okay.
With that last five-year plan.
Okay, so five years ago, HUD approved our action plan for 7.5 million dollars approximately. Is that what you're saying?
No, no. What they do, so every five years, we do a five-year plan, which is a, it's a HUD requirement for the entitlement, and it lays out the priorities and goals and objectives for the use of the fund. And that first, and that five-year plan includes a one-year budget, which is in that 1.5 to 1.6 million dollar range. Every year, we get another allocation, and we have to do an annual action plan for that particular year. And the priorities and goals are essentially established through that prior five-year plan. So that five-year plan that we did in '20, if my math is correct here, would have covered, it covers these five years, establishing the goals and priorities for the five years, but it only includes the annual action plan for the first year. We do the annual action plan every year over the five years.
So then, so, so the allocation is not on a five-year basis?
Correct.
It's on a, on an annual year, but it's generally this 1.5, 1.6 amount?
That's what it's been running over the past few years.
Okay. And when you, on page, on page three, where you, where you outline the categories of eligible activities, and public service administration plan and project use, how are these things advertised or made known to the public as far as funds being available for use in these different categories?
So every year, as part of preparing the annual action plan, we do a needs hearing. We do, well, so the hearing is a needs hearing, and it's also to identify accomplishments. And so the needs hearing is a hearing, we advertise it, and we solicit people to come to it and solicit applications for funding.
Okay, so, hold on. So how is this needs hearing advertised?
We advertise, primarily the advertisement is in the Virginia Pilot, and we then also will notify the organizations that have typically been getting funding, and then anyone who I meet through the year who's asking about CDBG and home funding, I will reach out to them. And there's also occasionally just people who find us through, probably getting references through other people in the city.
I was just going to say, that's a little problematic. First of all, when you say you advertise in the Virginia Pilot, you know, where in the Virginia Pilot? You know, how, is it in a certain little area that people who know to go to look, look for it? Previous organizations getting notice, and then you contacting persons who are in your circle? Because this whole CBD funding issue appears to be on this island where no one knows what's going on, and it's a lot of money. And I have an issue with how this has been presented as being marketing, because it seems like there are groups that get an advantage when they know where to go and you know who to contact. And I think that definitely is something that needs to be addressed policy-wise from council. Now, when you talk about, in this category, public service, who are the recipients? And when you, when you list, when you list here on page five, these different entities, so are they Portsmouth organizations, or they can, can there be non-Portsmouth groups that are seeking these funds?
Yes. For instance, For Kids runs a regional housing hotline that serves the region, including Portsmouth. And so we're paying them to support what they provide here in Portsmouth. And they, you know, they do a monthly report for us, showing the number of Portsmouth residents who use that service. And the Independence Center is in Norfolk. They're a regional agency. There's no Portsmouth agency that I'm aware of that serves disabled people the way that they do. And so they provide us with a regular report showing us who they have served in Portsmouth in terms of doing, they do, help, their objective is to help people live independently, and so whether it's jobs or housing, that's what they do. So we work with these agencies that are not located here in Portsmouth, but they are providing their services to Portsmouth residents. You know, that's, that's, those are the two primaries.
So when I look at, when I look at something like Aggleston Homeless Employment Services?
Yes.
So how are they benefiting Portsmouth residents?
So they're located here in Portsmouth. They participate in the continuum of care, as does For Kids, and as does the Independence Center. And so they're located here, and they get referrals from the continuum, as does For Kids and the Independence Center. And so they're, I believe they, you know, their service, I'm pretty sure, if I recall, is really just serving the people here in Portsmouth, their homeless employment service.
Okay, all right. And then, so the only non-Portsmouth entity is the one you mentioned?
Yes. Neither Aggleston nor the Independence Center are physically located here, but they participate in our continuum, and they provide services for Portsmouth service, Portsmouth residents with these dollars.
Okay. And on page nine, where we have the home entitlement, now the home entitlement, that's, is that not considered a category of eligible activities?
Home is a different program, so there's, it's a different funding. So there's Community Development Block Grant and Home.
Okay. And so as far as what you have here on page 10, when it says down payment and closing assistance, and then you have Hampton Roads Planning District, is that what that is?
Yes.
So how is that actually working? 200, it says 200,000 Hampton Roads Planning District.
Right. So they have a program that we wrote, and they administer it. They have a woman there, Shanita Bethay. She's very qualified and competent in the field of doing, first, working with first-time home buyers. She's done it for many years, for many communities. She's done housing counseling. We provide up to $14,500 of assistance, that's for down and closing, to buyers at or below 80% of area median. Typically, they need to be above, or at or above 60.
So where is that office located?
There in Chesapeake.
Okay, so now, how does a person in Portsmouth know, first of all, that that office is over there? They got to go through the toe, tunnel. How are they knowledgeable and informed that that resource for them is all the way in Chesapeake? Why isn't that here in Portsmouth?
Well, all right. So there's a couple reasons. Shanita, like I said, she's very good. She does outreach through the Urban League. She does outreach through the...
Right, but that's, that's not, when you're talking about persons who are struggling and in poverty, and transportation becomes an issue, get into Chesapeake, and this is a Portsmouth-funded?
Right.
Why would we be sending money all the way to Chesapeake for someone to go get housing, down payment assistance, when we have space right here in Portsmouth, and we can advertise it and it could be more accessible?
Well, all right. So I would like to clarify, this is really not a program for people in poverty. You have to qualify for a mortgage.
Well, when you use poverty and low income, you know, those definitions can vary. So when we say poverty and low income, you know, they, they don't just specifically identify those that are below a certain threshold when I'm using it. But at the same time, the point is, regardless, what is a office that is to benefit people who need assistance here in Portsmouth doing in Chesapeake?
Well, all right. So they do a lot of their work online. They've been doing that even before?
No, no, no. That's, that's not a justification.
All right.
Because then we have issues with access to internet that persons have. And so I don't understand, I don't understand why we have a program that's to help people with a down payment and closing assistance that is funded and for Portsmouth Community Block Grant. Does Chesapeake get Community Block Grant money?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if they get it, then I don't see that, do they have an office over here in Portsmouth?
The HPC does not.
Right.
This is a program that is specifically for Portsmouth residents.
Yeah. I'm just saying, I have a, I don't see a justification for why we're sending money like that, and people are struggling right here in this city, who probably don't even know about it and can't access it. And that's my whole issue with this CDBG, is access. And what I'm hearing is that there are a lot of obstacles, and there's only certain people that are benefiting from this, who have either connections or inside information, and I think that needs to change. When you talk about this community housing development organization, who is that?
The CHODO. Typically, we, in the past several years, it's been difficult. We've worked with Habitat of Southampton Roads. There are not many organizations that qualify. A CHODO has very specific guidelines for qualification, and it's not a whole lot of money that goes to a CHODO.
Does it, does, does it have to go to CHODO?
Yes.
So under the guidelines, home project guidelines, you have to put so much towards community housing development?
15% at a minimum.
All right. And so, like I said, who are the organizations that are getting this?
The only CHODO that's active in Southampton Roads right now is the Habitat, the Habitat of Southampton Roads.
You mean the organization that builds homes?
Yes.
Habitat for Humanity or something? And so that's, that's, those are my concerns, and I hope that, I hope that council will address these issues. Although the money is coming from the, from HUD, are there ordinances that council has passed in the past that has permitted you to do what you're doing?
While you adopt the five-year plan, you adopt the...
No, I mean, when you decide that you're going to locate an office over in Chesapeake, how, how does that authority arrest? Is that totally your authority to do that?
It's my authority. I work under the direction of the Planning Director, Bob Baldwin. You know, we, that's...
So the Planning Director approves where resources are allocated like that?
Yes, those resources, those down and closing program, which are available here for Portsmouth residents.
Okay, yeah. And the reason I'm disturbed by this is because I raised the issue when we were discussing about the ARPA funding and how we can get assistance to people, and one of the things that was mentioned was that we have CDBG funds available, and to help with what I'm seeing here, like mortgage assistance and down payments. And see, when you talk that stuff that is available, but then when we critique it and see although it's there, it may not be fairly accessible. And I think that that's something that this council seriously needs to address, and it confirms my thought and suspicion that it's operating out there on this island, that it needs to be drawn in so there can be a more benefit to many more citizens here in Portsmouth.
Well, thank you, sir. And in the interest of others having an opportunity to ask questions, I'm going to pivot to allowing other council members the floor. But what I will say in, in, in just making it clear and clarity, Mr. Kramer is a city staff employee, and when he comes before council with information, he is providing that information to the best of his ability. And I think all of us on council need to keep in mind that when city staff comes before us, it's not really an opportunity. We certainly can ask questions and provide whatever level of inquiry that we choose, but I think we have to be careful of sometimes how we move towards our city staff, because at the end of the day, our city manager is the one who works for us, not city staff. And so when we provide these questions, we need to understand those questions need to be presented to our, our city manager and not city staff.
No, when we have a presentation...
Sir, you're out of order.
No, I'm not. You're out of order.
Sir, you're out of order.
You're out of order.
Sir, you are out of order. You, sir, you do not have the floor.
When we have a...
Sir, you...
Go right on.
You do not have the floor.
I'm ready to try to put me out of this meeting.
You do not have the floor, sir.
Go right on.
You are out of order.
Go right on.
You are out of order.
I said, go right on.
Mr. Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there are six, never mind, never mind. My question's to Mr. Kramer. I don't want to get in it with him, but you know, you cannot hold the microphone hostage to interrogate someone. Mr. Kramer, if I heard you right on the down payment and closing assistance, you said that's available, those funds are available to people that qualify for mortgages. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, the germane question is, it's not a geographic question on what, what city it's located in. I want to know how many Portsmouth people got assistance from the program. You may not have that with you tonight, but I, I would like for council to have that information. Because that, that will let us know the, the worthiness of the program, not, not whether it's located in Chesapeake. I, I would assume that people who qualify for mortgages can travel a great distance to Chesapeake. And, and Chesapeake is available without going through the tunnel.
So, so we've been funding this program, we're in our sixth year. We funded it in this range of two twenty, uh, two hundred to, I think a couple of years we maybe did as high as two fifty. And we've done every year twelve to fifteen households in that, you know, fourteen thousand dollar, five hundred. There's been a few circumstances, we'll do up to twenty based upon certain conditions which are laid out in our guidelines. So we've used this money very readily, we've used it all. Usually will take twelve to fifteen months to use that two hundred plus amount of money. And, you know, we, we've had a lot, it's really been a fairly successful program, you know. So over that six years, we, we're closing in on a hundred home buyers who are buying houses here in Portsmouth.
So, so there's, there's two hundred thousand dollars that council approves out of the budget. All of that goes to families purchasing homes in Portsmouth?
First time home buyers.
Right. So, so in, in my view, that, that's certainly a worthwhile program. The other thing that was mentioned, the, the Virginian Pilot. I do agree, I know the law says that things have to be advertised in the Virginian Pilot. I do think, and this is statements not to you specifically, but to city manager. I think we do need to look at other venues to advertise things. Because the Virginian Pilot circulation is sinking about as quick as the Titanic did. So we, we need to make sure that we, we're advertising programs on social media and other venues, even community venues. But thank you for the presentation, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, sir, and Councilman Battle, sir, you have the floor, and then Vice Mayor Barnes.
I think what Mr. Whitaker is trying to say is, to whom it may concern, let's focus a little bit more on the city of Portsmouth. That's the essence.
Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
For, for the program is, I know you said first time home buyers, but is that, is that for them buying a house in Portsmouth? Or is, is the program directed to people of Portsmouth? Like, we looking for people who are in Portsmouth who are trying to be first time home buyers in Portsmouth?
So the, the program is primarily the people who bought our Portsmouth people. That you have to buy the house in Portsmouth, you have to commit to live in it for up to five years as your principal residence. The people who've been buying have largely been Portsmouth residents. But because of rising housing costs, your best value in Hampton Roads, in Southampton Roads, is in Portsmouth. And so there have been buyers primarily from Chesapeake or Suffolk who are coming into Portsmouth and buying a house, becoming first time home buyers here in Portsmouth. There, there's, they are not displacing any Portsmouth persons from participating in the program. We have sufficient resources for that. But they're committing to Portsmouth for an extended period of time and making an investment here in Portsmouth. But that's been a small, much small number of the buyers in the program.
So it's, it's not, you, I can be, I can live in Norfolk.
But you have to buy the house in Portsmouth.
Okay, so, so do, we don't have anybody in Portsmouth that can do the same thing?
It, it's a very, doing first time home, running a first time home buyer program, it's a very time consuming process. You have to, you have to collect income information.
No, I just wanted to know if we had anybody in Portsmouth that could do the same thing?
There's no agency that I'm aware of that does that right now. You know, and so the city could possibly do it if the city's inclined to do it. Or, you know, figure out if there is another agency that might be willing to take it on. I'm not sure that there is one that exists here in Portsmouth.
Is that something like that we, we could put an RFP out for or something?
We could definitely explore that. Councilman Dr. Whitaker brought this issue up at our one-on-one budget meeting and we recognize that we need to do a better job of tightening down some of the policies around how these funds are allocated. And so we will do that going forward. But yes, that, that is a possibility to explore an RFP to see if there are other entities. We could also do a cost benefit analysis to determine what it would take for the city to do this. So we, we can explore those options.
Yeah, I, I think at the end of the day, for, for all of us, it's just, we want to keep stuff in Portsmouth. And we want Portsmouth businesses or groups to benefit from whatever funding that we provide. As, as far as the summer camp funding, I saw it was seventeen thousand dollars. Is, is that, how many kids is that? Is that for the summer, the, the summer raise program?
Yes, that'll be for the summer raise program of twenty-three. And we've funded that in, in the past few years. They've taken some of their old money that's in these programs and funded it. And they usually do, you know, so they're paying the enrollment and they've usually done about twenty kids each year. And I don't know, but they'll, they should do more with the seventeen thousand.
Oh yeah, I was about to say seventeen thousand, should go more than twenty. And, and I saw that we completed some, some fields and things of that nature. Is this something that we can use to Charles Peak?
Uh, yes, keep in mind that one, one of the points that he made was we get about one point five million a year. And so to some of the projects that have been done in the past, like the Sportsplex, it took a number of years to get enough funds to do the project. So to answer your question, yes, it is possible. But considering the fact that we only get about one point five million a year, it's going to take a number of years to get to what we need for St. Charles Peak.
So could we, we mix this funding with something else?
You could.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's not.
And that is all my.
And one of the other things I will say also, just in, in the information that I've gotten from this program, part of what we've tried to do is spread it around to a number of different organizations, recognizing that sometimes in order to make a difference in any organization, it has to be a multi-year commitment. And so that's just kind of the, the guiding rule.
That's all my time.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kramer, for the presentation. Back on page five with the, the public service entities that are listed here. These are part of the five year plan. They, they were already in the loop for, to receive the allocations that are listed here. The current year funding, the requested funding, and then the proposed funding.
They have to apply every year, they have to come in and qualify and apply every year.
Okay, all right, so they don't have to get their notification through the, the media, Virginian Pilot? They just already know that?
Yeah, they know the schedule, they work with us, you know.
Okay, and then I guess, I guess my questioning with that is, I know that we had waived some of the fees for the seniors to participate in their activities at some of the rec centers. But how was the proposed funding for transportation for the seniors reduced to zero?
Because we're funding it out of the general fund budget. We felt that anything that was a priority needed to be funded.
Need to come through the.
Got it, okay.
Mr. Battle, sir, you have the floor.
I know that Eggersden is a good program and they moved a satellite office here. And that's kind of justifiable. But the Independence Center, they have a variety of funding sources and they are not lacking for much of anything. And they do very limited amount of services in the city. So maybe we can look at, uh, channeling those funds to something else in the future within the city.
Councilman Woodard, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I definitely support Dr. Whitaker on his questioning about where these offices are located. And like I say, it's, it's just really about accessibility. As, as we distribute these funds and we want our, our citizens to have access to these resources. You know, we want them within our city limits, you know. As, as we can be short sighted at times, our, our downtown continuously turned into a ghost town. So, you know, those, those offices can be positioned here. Some of our citizens can be aware of them, I think, in adequate time. You know, we are questioning, I think, Mr. Moody questioned about how we're advertising this, how we're getting it out to our citizens. And we, we have to be mindful that, you know, this is a great program. You are getting fifteen to twenty participants every year. But, you know, I, I think the timeframe could be sped up if they knew about it, if it was something that word of mouth could, could spread to other participants in the future. So it is something that I think I would support Dr. Whitaker's argument. But to segue to my question, the Portsmouth Re Development Housing Authority rehabs for our elderly, what actually does that detail? I, I mean, do they have to sign up for these renovations? Is this something extra that the property owners won't initially do? Or is these upgrades or what, what details in this one fifty?
So, so we, we provide up to fifteen thousand dollars per unit. And it's for repairs that have been, that result from a lack of preventative maintenance through the time. You know, so they might do a roof, they might do an HVAC, some windows, some siding. Within that limited scope of the fifteen thousand dollars. We're, we're looking at the houses that are not too far gone, that they're still habitable with just some, some repairs that will support, that take care of things that have been neglected over time. And again, these homeowners need to be below eighty percent of area median income.
Right, so are, do they have to be on a property or is this just for section eight housing?
No, it, it's for, no, we don't do section eight. It has to be for an owner occupied household. And they have to be age sixty-two or older and they have to be at or below eighty, eighty percent of area median income.
Okay, and how do they sign up for this?
PRHA, it's all run through PRHA. They're working right now, you know, so we funded it this year for the, for this amount. And they're working with, I think, eight to nine homeowners currently working on this. And, you know, they've done some outreach for it, I don't remember exactly how they did the outreach. But they, you know, so they're, it's a small pot of money. And, you know, so they're, they're, they're working on this now.
Okay, how much, I mean, how many people they average a year with this particular program?
So this is the first year. And so this hundred and sixty thousand will get in the range of, like I said, seven, eight, nine households.
Okay, all right.
Yes, on page, on page four, where you have the CBG, CDBG categories eligible activities. At the bottom, when it says that it must meet one of three national objectives, benefit low and moderate income persons, prevention elimination of slums or blight, and then the third, urgent needs. How is, how is this defined? Who, who defines what is considered an urgent need?
So an urgent need is something that.
No, no, I was asking who defines?
HUD.
Okay, so these are based on HUD definitions, each one of these?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And Mr. Kramer, I, I did have a couple of questions myself. With, with CB, CDBG funds, of course, we know that they come from HUD. Is there strict accounting and, and accountability for those dollars as it relates to what you have to provide to HUD? And also, if those dollars are not used appropriately, is there a penalty or is there a consequence to that?
So, yes, there's all kinds of HUD oversight. We, you know, we, we get our money through a line of credit and it's all, a lot of the reporting and the monitoring is done through how we get this, which is through this online system, IDIS, integrated, integrated, and I can't remember the other initials. But it, so a lot of monitoring goes on there, there's all kinds of reporting that we do. We do an annual CAPR, we do, through the IDIS system, we're doing various reporting that is monitored. And occasionally they will come out and monitor us. They'll look through our files and, or they'll do online monitoring where we'll send them things. And then your other question was.
Right, if, if those funds are not used appropriately.
Yeah, we have to pay HUD back and they have to, the, the payment needs to be from non-federal funds. So we can't, you know, we're not taking a reduction of our grant, we're paying them out of city revenue.
Very good. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Which, which that has occurred in the past, where the city had to pay back CB, CDBG funds because the funds were not used by the vendor properly.
It was home that I'm aware of.
Well, on the home side.
Right.
Right, it's the same thing, if it's not used what is supposed to be allocated for, the city has to pay those funds back out of non, in this case it would have, it was non-home funds.
Correct.
Right.
Thank you, sir, thank you for your time.
All right, you're welcome.
And thank you for your presentation. Madam Manager?
Next, we have Mr. Trey Burke, our Budget Officer. He will be presenting the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget drivers. The team met with each council member to review the proposed budget and to receive direction and feedback relative to the process. The team will continue to address and incorporate any approved recommendations for the final budget.
Mr. Burke?
All right.
You have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Barnes, members of City Council, citizens and the observing public. The budget for any given fiscal year is made up of revenues and expenditures, which must be equal despite being independent from, from one another. As such, every budget must meet the needs of our community within tight fiscal constraints. This presentation will review many of the long-term factors which influenced the FY 2023 budget development, review budget highlights, expenditure increases, debt, capital policy, excuse me, debt policies, and give a high level review of the fiscal year 2023 through 2027 capital program. While current events are always on our minds, long-term considerations are as important as ever. Inflation increases the cost of everything from salaries to fuel to contractual services. The current fiscal year has seen high inflation, but because of regular salary increases and preset contractual increases, we have been insulated from many of the impacts. However, as time goes on, we will be more exposed to the impacts of inflation and must be extra vigilant as we monitor expenditures. Despite a steadily growing demand by state and federal governments to provide services in a, in a strict regulatory environment, the broad trend has been for state and federal governments to provide less and less aid to local governments. Currently, the General Assembly is considering the elimination of the grocery tax, which represents two point five million dollars of general fund revenue. While there are currently proposals in both chambers to maintain the disbursement at current levels, the details on how they maintain funding can have a huge impact on the revenues of the city. Long-term pressure of priorities such as retirement and facility maintenance get more costly as they are not funded, particularly retirement, where unfunding today will lead to larger payments tomorrow. The city must balance a plethora of competing service needs that include public safety, education, facility maintenance, utilities, job creation and technological efficiencies, workforce. This year, we saw an unprecedented demand for public safety employees that pushed localities around the region to greatly increase salaries. Portsmouth was proactive in offering competitive salaries and Human Resources has embarked on a marketing campaign that has increased the number of applicants for positions for these jobs. This will aid in rightsizing the city to ensure we can continue to provide effective and timely services. The overall total of city revenues and expenditures, including capital programs, utilities, schools, and all other funds, is 767.3 million. The general fund budget is 267.4 million. The general fund includes services such as public safety, civil and criminal justice, excuse me, the criminal and civil justice system, leisure services, public works, and constitutional slash support services. The general fund is primarily funded by local tax revenue, which you will discuss on the next slide. Noting the, excuse me, noting the pressure of inflation, this budget includes one-time reduction on personal property taxes as proposed by the Commissioner of Revenue and agreed to by City Council. With regards to, excuse me, with regards to employee compensation, this budget includes a 3% general wage increase and includes funding to address compensation issues as they are identified throughout the city, with a special emphasis on public safety. We believe this constitutes a good first step to tackling this compression problem. As stated earlier, overall local tax revenues represent 85% of general fund revenues and 75% of our revenues come from taxes paid locally. Of the 75%, real property is our largest source of revenue at 42%. Personal property tax is 12%. And other local taxes such as sales, restaurant, business taxes, and taxes on utility payments total 21% of the total budget. Fees for services such as building inspections, programs, and museums admission, fines, and investment income, as well as recovered costs and transfer from other funds, total 10%. Revenues granted by the state represent 15% of the budget and may include support for our criminal justice system, constitutional office, aid to police department, this is commonly referred to as 599 funding, and roadway maintenance from VDOT. Most of the state aid is a direct allocation for employees in the clerk of circuit court, city treasurer, commissioner of the revenue, Commonwealth Attorney's Office, and the sheriff's office. This is a list of proposed expenditure increases, which reflect the specific long-term and short-term impacts as they are shown in the budget. Budget proposals to address long-term pressures include: $6.5 million for schools and facility maintenance projects; $1 million for other post-employment or OPEB contributions; $9 million for various personal compensation initiatives, including compression and a 3%, excuse me, a 3% general wage increase; $1.6 million for debt service; $2.7 million for operating increases in contract and internal service funds; and $1.6 million for roadway resurfacing on projects throughout the city. Also included in the budget is $400,000 for online permitting software; $500,000 for a projected increase to the social services fund match; $300,000 in construction assistance for the Portsmouth Community Health Center; $100,000 for our community and regional organization grant partners; and $2.5 million to permanently fund the fiscal year 2022 schools allocation and youth programs. This chart represents the growth in personnel costs. The orange and gray bars are the total of salaries and benefits going from $78.3 million in fiscal year 2017 to $93.3 million in fiscal year 2023. And the yellow line on the graph represents the expenditures per employee increasing from 41,000 to 50,000. While we experience negative 2% to 4% growth in fiscal year 2017 through 2022, we are projecting an 11% increase in fiscal year 2023. Despite the fact that we're only giving 3% for a general wage increase, this growth is driven by hiring and compensation as well as higher starting salaries, which has created a need to address these compression issues. It's also worth noting that the number of employees in the city decreased from 1,900 in fiscal year 2017 to 1,840 in fiscal year 2020. This enabled per-employee salary benefits to grow while overall expenditures increased only modestly. This pie chart breaks down the general fund budget by expenditure category or the type of expenditure. 25% of the budget is allocated to salaries; 8% to benefits, including health insurance and current employee retirement; 22% is a contribution to Portsmouth Public Schools; 8% goes to legacy retirees; 9% goes to other operating expenses, such as supplies, materials, and non-capital purchases; 8% goes to contract, including the regional jail, Hampton Roads Transit, and smaller contracts as they are strewn about the city in different departments; 10% goes to debt service, but note that this number is calculated differently than the number you're going to see in a couple of slides on our debt service policy. 6% goes to internal service, information technology, risk management, and the City Garage Vehicle Services Fund. Only, excuse me, and 4% is allocated as a grant match for children's services, social services, behavioral healthcare services, parking authority, and the golf fund. The city has adopted debt policies to guide and inform the amount of debt we can take on, including a ratio of outstanding debt and a debt service to revenue ratio. Our debt policies state that our outstanding tax debt should not exceed 4% of total assessed non-exempt real property values. In fiscal year 2023, we project this ratio to be 4.2%, assuming no additional tax debt in fiscal year 2023. This is above our policy. Debt service is the yearly amount of money spent on repaying debt principal and interest. Our adopted debt policy sets a limit of 10% for the allocation of debt service payments to general fund and schools revenue. As a point in time, we pay 9% of school and general fund revenue on tax-supported debt service, while the policy allows for additional debt. Increases to our annual debt service payments will impact our ability to fund other priorities in future years. The proposed fiscal year 2023 capital program reflects the city's health, safety, and welfare needs. While the proposed fiscal year 2023 capital program will be appropriated on council adoption, future years are not appropriated and for planning purposes only. Future years may change as the needs of the city or priorities of the councils change. The total capital program proposal includes sewer, water, drainage, and streets, including, excuse me, including stormwater management projects; education, industrial and economic development projects; leisure services, municipal facility, the Parking Authority CIP, and fleet management. This presentation discussed the factors that impacted the fiscal year 2023 budget, highlights of the budget, and debt and capital projects. I'd be glad to answer or report back on any questions you have.
Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. Can you go to page 11? Where the CIP highlights, right? And we're having a public hearing on the CIP today.
Yes, sir.
In our one-on-one sessions, there was a discussion about there being $40 million still available that the city could go through the bond market and that, if I remember correctly, it would add about $2 million to our debt service and that would keep us still under the 10% policy. Is that correct? So that information, when we're looking at adopting and the citizens discussing the CIP, shouldn't that be relevant information that they have at hand so that when we're looking at trying to finance these and talking about sources of funds? Because council has not made a decision yet on the route to go with the bond issue.
Correct.
Right.
This budget reflects a status quo, reflects the needs for health, safety, and welfare. If there's any projects that council wants to consider or add to the budget, those will be done by consensus and vote.
All right. And also, as we're looking at the CIP, that whole infrastructure money still has to be considered as well. Is that also?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, and we know that that's why we built a status quo budget just based on health, wealth, and safety, because there's a whole lot of moving parts. And some of that we may know by this budget and some we may not. And so we wanted to make sure that we put something forward based on the resources we have in hand.
Okay, okay. And also, for education, that 4.8 million figure, can we get a breakdown on what that consists of?
Yes.
And is that something that we're able to get for the hearing tonight? Is that breakdown available for the hearing?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Because I think that's important to break out because we've been having quite a bit of discussion on it.
Also, keep in mind that this is one hearing, but we also will have another hearing.
Right.
Which then we can incorporate any changes that you discuss tonight or that we hear tonight from the public and you want to incorporate. That's the next, on the 26th, will be another public hearing.
If it's too difficult to get for tonight, I understand. But if it's possible, at least, at least for council information.
Yes, we will try.
Are there any other questions for my colleagues on council? Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
From the presentation, the, I noticed that the Sportsplex, the Capitol Manor Rex Center complex, and a couple numerous of other projects, is that included in this overall? Which one of these categories would that be included in this overall?
If they were included, they would be included in the...
Leisure services.
Leisure services.
So they're not included?
They're not included. As we started, this is just the status quo. Once council makes a decision of which projects you want to go forward, then we will put those in the budget.
And as far as the Sportsplex, the 65 million, is that the up-to-date with what we're talking about more of a Sportsplex like what Virginia Beach has or?
It will, it won't be exactly like what Virginia Beach has because we do not have the space, but it will definitely be expanding it to offer more opportunities to get more people in, to have more tournaments, to have different types of activities.
Because, again, I say, you know, also with a budget, we want to make sure that we bring in revenues when we created a budget. And when I was at the Virginia Beach State of the City and I was talking with the city manager, he sat at the table that I sat at, and we were talking about the Sports Center. And he was saying that a lot of people were, were saying that they were crazy for opening the Sports Center during a pandemic. But he said, "That's been the biggest moneymaker for the city in the last couple of years." And he was talking about, "A lot of us talk about getting a professional team." But when it comes to that actual Sports Center and their Sportsplex, that's money, they're making money every single weekend because it's something always there. So I know a lot of people look at, "Oh, we want to bring a Sportsplex to Portsmouth," but they don't see the money generated from that. So is there any way that we can talk to them and see what the money, what type of revenue they're bringing so we can present that to the people of Portsmouth so they can see the type of money that those type of things brings in for a city?
I think that's a great suggestion because what it should show is the revenue sources that they are capturing when they say it's bringing in revenue. So that's really, we will do that.
And also, I'm not sure how detailed we can go into it, but what it does for the economy that's around it as well, the hotels, the restaurants, and all of that. I took an AU basketball team to Harrisonburg two weeks ago. And what we were in Harrisonburg was nothing but farm area. But in that particular part where they had the Sportsplex, it was, everything around it was making money, including that particular Sportsplex. I can't think of the name of it, but it was actually a smaller version of what they have in Virginia Beach.
And that's usually the case when you're talking about an event center that brings people to it. You look at the hotel revenue, you look at the revenue that you get from the restaurants associated with that use, and that's part of your economic impact to the area that you look at. For example, when we're talking about events, the Portsmouth Invitational Tournament is an event that attracts people from all over. It's going to fill up the hotel we have. And they estimate that that event will bring $2 million in economic development to this, in economic impact to this area. So that's just one.
And speaking of, I'll talk about that at a later time. But also, not to, just to talk about the Sportsplex, but even with the updating of the fields and when it comes to our high schools, those, because in Virginia Beach, that Sportsplex has a turf field directly across from it. And what that does, it brings in not only football events, it brings in soccer events, field hockey, and those type of things. And that's bringing tournaments and things, not just on the inside, but on the outside, which again generates more money. And that can, again, benefit all of our local restaurants. I know when it comes to the toes, a lot of our businesses are taking a heavy impact. But when it comes to those tournaments, people don't care about the toes.
Councilwoman Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Trey Burke, for the presentation. My question lies on page five with the expenditure increases. I guess comparing the non-school CIP allocations and the school CIP allocations totaling $6.5 million in comparison to the proposed CIP highlights that are listed for education on the back page. I know we're going to get a breakdown of what that entails, but just trying to see what the variance is, the difference is in that $6.5 million and the, what's that, $4.8 million over there under the highlights?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so...
And, you know, the difference in that case is that we are not programming, we are not appropriating any ARPA money in here. However, we do include it in the CIP because they are capital projects. They are taking staff capacity and staff time, so they are in there. And that's the difference in there, the 4.8, the 2.6. That's a lot of indoor air quality projects under ARPA that are happening in city schools.
Okay. And then my final question, under the expenditure increases, I see police starting salary is going to be a 3-point, a $3 million dollar increase. And I know that we're at $50,000 for our officers. But we all attended the Norfolk State of the City address last weekend. Saw that they have made their starting salary $54 million. I mean, that makes us competitive in the region again. Where does that place us in the region with our competitive offer?
That is a question we'll probably want to get back with, if you want to report back on.
Councilman Woodard and then Dr. Whitaker.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Trey. Per our previous conversation, our one-on-one, I think I asked for a report back on possibly getting a trade school wing together. You know, I think it's very important, just, you know, this week, I seen a young lady graduate with a degree, a certification in welding. And pretty much it's just showing us that kids are gravitating towards these trades, whatnot. They're using this as an option besides going to college. And it's very important for our city, which has a high poverty, poverty, to have options to, for our kids to go into these careers. So I think that's something that, you know, we need to really look into before we commit to this budget. And like I say, you know, maybe a school is something that's out of our range at this point, but we have to look at what avenues we can take to make sure that our kids are getting the education that they need and the skills they need to grow and be lifelong citizens right here in Portsmouth. So if we can, we need to get that report back.
Madam City Manager, ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, staff is working on that report back as well as a couple of other items. One thing I will note is that our staff is working in conjunction with consultants to put together a list of projects for the infrastructure bill. And one of those items on that project list will be a workforce development center. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of moving parts going on between ARPA funds, infrastructure bill funds, CIP. All of those will not be determined by the time we need to make a decision. That does not preclude us from going forward and still making adjustments as we go forward. This budget is a point in time, and we will make the best decision that we have based on the... based on the information available at this time. But that doesn't stop us from being able to change it in the future as we get information about the projects that we've submitted for the infrastructure bill.
Yeah, and I understand things take time, but, you know, where we at right now in the world, you know, we have to make certain things priority. We just really have to. I mean, we're beside one of the largest shipyards in the world. So it's no excuse for us not to be ready to go to work on some of the biggest naval crafts in the area. You know, develop that workforce. We should, we should be ready to go. So I understand what you're saying, but it's fitting for us to be well-prepared to assist our naval shipyard. So, you know, I think we have to start moving things around on that list appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
This is for our chief financial officer. The, in our one-on-one meetings, there was a mention, I want to make sure the figure is correct. Was it $1.4 million in water bill debt or 14 million? From, I think that was a figure from fiscal...
It was 14 million.
14 million as of fiscal...
June 30th.
June 30th, right.
2021.
Right, right. And so there was also to be a breakdown as we looking at the budget and revenue sources of residential, commercial, and possibly an industrial category. Was that something council needed to create, or is that category present?
Good evening, council. Dr. Whitaker, industrial was not, is not currently a category for our utilities. We have residential and commercial, and we wanted to explore adding another category for industrial.
And so we have businesses that are part of that $14 million delinquency?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, as far as on the residential side, there were ARPA funds or I think some other funds before ARPA that helped with the residential delinquency?
Yes, so, yes, sir, CARES and ARPA.
Okay, so as you're looking at this $14 million, or maybe a little less, because that was 2021, or maybe more. So as we're looking at that, then, is that primarily commercial in this industrial area where we're seeing that delinquency?
No, unfortunately, Dr. Whitaker, that is, the majority of that is residential.
Okay, so the breakdown of those categories, I thought you all mentioned that that was something we could get for this meeting. Is that available yet?
Well, we actually are working with IT and pull some information. And what the struggle was with addressing that is separating them category-wise. There are numbers, and unfortunately, in the past, some identifiers have not been consistent. So what we're just trying to do is extract that information to provide it to council. What I, my concern is, though, for residential, I didn't really want to provide everybody on council with the names of every individual that is delinquent. But we do have it broken down where you can see where the majority of those dollars are delinquent in residential.
Right, right.
And absolutely, we had about $1.2 million for CARES Act and about $358,000 for the additional CARES of what we consider around ARPA. And all of that was exhausted by December 31st.
Okay, right, I'm not interested in getting a breakdown on the residential. Do we have any idea of that 14 million, how much of that is percentage-wise residential, commercial, or residential, and then all other?
See, so we have the numbers, but we needed him to go back and identify some additional years that were reflective in our annual report. And so he, the information he pulled was just incomplete. We needed him to go back and address some additional years so that you could get a full snapshot of what that looked like for June 30th.
So do you know approximately when council will have that information?
And my apologies to you because I was hopeful that we could get it the next day. But as we continued to dig into that information, we saw it wasn't complete, and we didn't want to provide that incomplete information. But with hopes, we should have it by Friday. Again, we have the information, but we are just reconciling it to ensure that it identifies the information you requested.
Okay, all right. And then for our city assessor, because we also have the revenue sources through our taxes, there was mention about entities in the city that have received some state, through state law, some decrease in the amount of property taxes that they are required to pay through certain open-use exemptions. And so some of these organizations that receive those exemptions still have to pay taxes, but they haven't paid them. And so for those delinquencies, as we look at this budget, where are we on that? If you, if it's...
That could open up a can of worms in terms of how far to go back and on who, specifically in programs that haven't been properly implemented in the past. And that's my hesitation on that.
So is that a, is that a city treasurer collection issue, or?
No, no, it would be whether the program's implemented by my department in a correct manner, and if it has not been, that's where our loss lies. To go back, I had the ability to go back three years on those. As I mentioned, that opens a Pandora's Box as to which to and which not to. It's a concern of mine that I'm addressing. I think your specific question is whether to go back.
Well, my specific question is that those entities have already received a subsidy from the state in essence by decreasing the amount of real estate taxes they're supposed to pay.
Not arguing that.
Which is already a benefit. And then on top of getting that benefit, they're still not paying the real estate tax.
Correct. Well, at this point, they will be, but it's the past where they have not.
Right, okay, so as far as collecting on that past, where are we on that?
Where I question the which ones to go back on and which ones not to. There are not just one, there are not just two, there's possibly many others.
And approximately, how much are we talking about as far as dollars?
Well, if we're talking about a specific case in which we're talking, roughly $12,000?
I mean...
Or all of them?
I mean, all of them.
Well, all of them, I'm going to need some assistance to get from the city attorney, whether my assumption's correct. There are many.
Okay.
Perhaps this particular matter will require a closed session?
Yes, definitely.
And you talking with the city attorney to provide all of that information?
Yes, sir.
To Dr. Whitaker's question, I think we, as a council, then can sit down and get more specific about how we'll move forward. And I would like to get a consensus on that from my colleagues on council to ask that you proceed forward
Yes, sir.
With that.
Absolutely.
Do we have a consensus? Thank you, sir.
And before you sit down, I just want to say, I think that that issue is a priority, considering when we talk about the real estate tax and we talk about citizens who are not making them, and then they go through legal processes, and we have entities out here that not only get a benefit from the state, but getting their taxes increased, but they're not paying the fair share. And I think that's, when we look at, you know, the millions of dollars that some of these businesses aren't paying in the water bill, and then on top of that, the tax...
Great consideration. I would have to defer to the mayor.
And then we're talking...
We need to go in a closed session?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not going into specifics. And then we look at a CIP, and we're talking about where we're getting, where will we get sources of funding? And these sources are here.
Sure.
And so just want to say that's a, it's a priority.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you for, Vice Mayor Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Just wanted to add to the facilities that I was talking about earlier. Boo Williams Sportsplex in Hampton, the revenue surrounding that as well, and both the Sports Center and the Sportsplex that's in Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions for Mr. Burke? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Well, my question is not necessarily to Mr. Burke, a couple of things. What I just heard that apparently we'll discuss later in closed session. You know, when we come to a public meeting in used terms, Pandora's Box, can of worms, even calling past assessors what they did or did not do into question. I want to hear facts. I don't want to hear generalities. It's not fair to people who've held that office in the past. And it also puts our whole government, I think, in a bad light. So, you know, I would appreciate it when you come back before council that you, if you don't have the facts, say so and come back publicly with the facts. But those terms are useless. And they don't, they don't educate anyone as to what the problem is. The other thing I wanted to mention, I've heard suggestions of different projects. I haven't heard of any bad project that I think is awful. But I think we also need to be grounded in reality based on the increase in assessments and the proposed budget as it stands now without a lot of those projects. To be revenue-neutral for our citizens, that represents a nine-cent tax increase. So if you add that to the current $1.30 per hundred for real estate, add nine cents to that, that's getting to be a pretty large number and a pretty large burden for people to share. So I think we need to keep that into perspective as we add things to the proposed budget that the manager has presented, because our citizens cannot afford any additional tax increase. In fact, if it stays neutral, even that's going to be hard to swallow based on the runaway inflation that we're seeing currently. To that point, I'm going to ask Ms. Terry if she could share what one penny on the revenue equals, one penny on the real estate tax rate equals now. Is it $900,000?
It's $840,000.
$840?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that's important that we keep that in mind going forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor.
And I agree with Councilman Moody when it comes to the taxes, raising taxes on our citizens. But, you know, I think we also got to make sure that when we add new things, that is generating income for our city, because those are the things that lower our taxes and help our citizens to make sure that we don't have to raise them and they can pay far less. I think that's one of the biggest things in the city when it comes to our tax base. We're not creating many tax bases and opportunity in generating income. So I agree, we shouldn't just put anything on the books, but we need to make sure that we put something on the books that's going to bring us a significant amount of money to deal with some of the issues that we have in our city.
Councilman Moody, you're next, sir, and then Dr. Whitaker.
I agree with that, but I think when we talk about revenue, once again, it shouldn't be generalities. Let's be grounded in the facts. And I think the manager said she'll get back with the Sportsplex in Virginia Beach on where their revenue is coming from. But to use generality, as you build it and it'll produce income, that's not always the case. Before we invest in something, we need to make sure the revenue is going to materialize and be real.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Doris, as our city assessor, I appreciate when someone comes and speaks with some transparency and candor. So definitely the sentiments that were expressed earlier about your comments, I do not share. I called you up to ask you questions, and you answered them, and I thank you for that.
Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
And I echo that. For me, I like to hear what's real and what's really going on. And those words let us know that we do have some issues that really need to be addressed. And I'm looking forward to hearing about it in the closed meeting.
Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
And also, I did not hear any comments that you made that was disparaging previous city assessors, because that's not what the issue is about. We're about trying to move forward, get revenue, and so we're not trying to get into those emotional arguments that take us nowhere.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burke, sir, I want to thank you for your presentation and information, and we look forward to continuing to work with you throughout this budget process. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time and your attention. Have a nice night.
Madam City Manager?
Next, I would like to provide a brief summary of the city manager reports for this evening, starting with 22-109. This is an amendment designed to clarify the process for establishing one-way streets, which allows the city manager to determine the appropriate street designation. The next one, 22-110, it's $1,000. This funding allows for increased child abuse prevention, public awareness activities. 22-111 is $200, allows for one-time funding from the National Drifters Incorporated to support the food pantry. The next one, 22-112, for $547,023, Portsmouth Public Schools is to reappropriate unexpended funds from the FY 2021 budget to the FY 2022 Portsmouth Public Schools general fund budget. Next one, 22-113, this is for 71,800, I mean, 71 million, sorry. 71,846,000. This is an adoption of an ordinance to appropriate grant funds received by Portsmouth Public Schools grant fund budget. And then the next one, $450,000, 22-114. This is an adoption of an ordinance to appropriate the funds to the Portsmouth Public Schools food service budget. And then the last one, 22-115, this is adoption of a resolution to authorize a temporary construction easement on city property owned in Suffolk. This property is used for access to the lakes and water facilities, and it will not negatively affect our utilities. And that's all I have. If there are any questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Also, we have come to the point of, Dr. Whitaker, sir, you have the floor.
Right, thank you, ma'am. I sent an email out, it was late, and it was requesting the copy of the food truck policy. Can we get that before our regular meeting?
Now, when you say the food truck policy, I'm not sure. Are you talking about any ordinance or code?
Right, what's, some citizens have been concerned about the food truck services in the past during Sunset Thursdays. And I was just, wanted to find out about our policy on the food trucks.
Okay, can I provide that in a report back? Because, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware.
Yeah, if it's something that is just a couple of pages or so, it could be printed out. I just wanted a copy of it.
Okay, sure.
Okay, sure, absolutely.
Thank you, sir. We now have come to council liaisons. Do we have any council liaison reports? Seeing none, then this public hearing, or, excuse me, work session is adjourned. We will begin our regular council meeting at 7 o'clock. Thank you all for attending. This meeting is adjourned.